The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on Tuesday, January 6, 2025, as well as posted on the city's website. Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Council members Briggs Jones.
Present.
Cherry.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
McCray.
Present.
Wyatt.
Present.
Vice President Sessom.
Present.
Council President Hockaday.
Present.
All members present in the court.
Okay, please rise to the president allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
A present allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and who work for peace. Amen.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 11th.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the meetings have been, meeting minutes have been approved. No communications for the mayor. Move right on to consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage. We have a few ordinances for this evening, scheduled for the same, MC 2025 31 to 2025 33, let's see, which are on for final passage as advertised. Moving on to resolutions, we have legislated bite of body items, 324 25 to R 329 dash 25. Any questions from council regarding those? If not, we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, they will should be added to the consent agenda. All right, the mayor BA items, R 30, 330 25.
Okay, council president, would you mind if we have our superintendent of recreation just speak briefly on the resolution recognizing September as brain aneurysm awareness month?
Absolutely, that'd be a joy.
Okay, thank you.
As always, I appreciate council president and the government bodies accommodation. Thank you all so much and I appreciate the accommodation. As part of, you know, Parks and Recreation has a, has an issue of working well with other divisions, so we were, and working with the Department of Health and Human Services in conjunction with the hugest event we throw all year, which if you know me, this is big for me to give them their props, is the House Music Festival, which ends our season. We, in Parks and Recreation, the Thursday prior, have been offering a smaller house music on the plaza, so even, and they're very popular. So we've decided that one that we host prior to the spectacular House Music Festival, also conjoined with health, be dedicated to a health concern that affects people in our community. So this year, we've chosen brain, to support brain aneurysm awareness month because the governor of New Jersey has declared it, September's brain aneurysm awareness month. And we like to start supporting things that are close to home. And we have a number of residents and a number of employees who've been affected by and suffered from brain aneurysms. And one of the partners that we're a partner, one of the partners, community partners we're working with this year is the Phoenix Foundation. And the CEO and the creator of that organization is a city employee, Ms. Kay Johnson, who works in sewer and solid waste. Come on up. And normally, it's not for me to present, but they're, they're being kind enough for me to read this because it's such a, it's such a long thing. It gives a lot of information about brain aneurysm awareness. And we'll be hosting a concert on the 18th in the Plaza City Hall, which you'll be tabling and we'll have informational flyers and information to give residents in the city of Plainfield, anybody else who comes, information about this very silent illness that strikes from nowhere. And if you would allow us, we'd like Ms. Johnson to say a few things about how it affected you and this illness.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I was actually at work at Robina Avenue when the thunderclap hit the back of my head and I was like, I didn't know what was going on. I saw this bright orange thing and I was trying to reach out to the director. I said, something's wrong, something's wrong. And he said, what's going on? I said, I see orange. And he said, he backed up and called the secretary and told her, called a rescue squad because something was going on. And that's when one of the aneurysms had burst. And we went straight out to JFK, got there and they had a great neurological team who said, yeah, you have bleeding in your head. So I wound up having one aneurysm, the one that burst, they cleaned that up and then that morning, they had to go in and clip the second one and then I had a stroke on the table. So truly, God is amazing and every 18 minutes, a brain aneurysm ruptures and it's very prominent in women over 50, but we know anything can happen at any time. So it's very silent, you might get a symptom of a mild headache and you'll just brush it off. And sometimes we have to pay attention to our bodies, but I really didn't have any forewarning until it felt like somebody hit me in the back of the head with a sledgehammer and went on from there. So the awareness is important to me because not a lot of us know that these things happen and they happen very quickly. And so whatever we can do to find out, get the government involved and help with prevention and that if we can get some type of, well, I know it's medical issues and insurance, but we are working on trying to find a way that if you're saying you're having these migraines, that they just don't brush it off as a migraine, that you can at least get checked properly and see if an aneurysm is forming. I thank you so much for your time and I thank you truly for your support and getting it out there about this because a lot of people don't know about it and it's not a lot of us that survive.
Right. And you know, just to let you know, Sister Kay is back at work waiting for the city of Plainfield. So we're truly grateful for that because that doesn't always happen. And you know, a lot of people don't see the connection between health and wellness and movement. And I've been fortunate enough here in the city of Plainfield, we like to thank the administration for always giving us the latitude to bring forth these things that we know are important for our residents. And I want the residents to know, not only does the city of Plainfield administration care about the residents, they care about their workers, as you can see here. You know, I come in front of you lots of times, lots of stuff. So they let us do lots of things that are important to us, so we, we appreciate that. Now, I can't read this and I don't normally present that, usually somebody else does, but I'm assuming that BA is going to have me stand here and do that. Okay, well, the bottom of, I just want you to read, I understand, is Division of Parks and Recreation will host an awareness event Thursday, September 18, 2025, with House Music on the Plaza, partnering with the Department of Health and Social Services and the Phoenix Foundation. And if, and if I can ask an indulgent for a photo opportunity with the governing body? And John, would you join us as well? Girl. [applause] Yes, could you guys start? Do you remember now?
Yes, ma'am.
So you have to vote this. Yes, yes. The state will play this hospital, so we will stand. Thank you.
There you go. Three, two, one.
Thank you, council president. And please remember, everyone, the last House Music on the Plaza, Thursday, it'll be next Thursday, September 18. See y'all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, Madam BA, you can go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. So we have five resolutions on this evening and of those five, four are recognizing September as some sort of month. So I just want to highlight some of the events that we're having. Hispanic Heritage Month, September 19, 6 to 9 p.m. at Black Lives Matter Plaza. We are going to be celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, obviously, that would be the Lenny Cathcart House Music Festival, which will also be an opioid awareness event. Sickle Cell Awareness Month, we're recognizing tonight and as we just spoke about, Brain Aneurysm Awareness Month. The, the other item that we have this evening is a resolution looking to amend a resolution we brought forward previously to apply for and accept a $500,000 grant with the county for a infrastructure project. We are not going to be able to spend the funds in the amount of time allotted for the previously discussed project. And so instead, we're looking to spend the funds on a project for a citywide alarm system, which we will go into depth about this evening because we have a resolution on for those funds later. And the county very generously allowed us to change projects when they realized we wouldn't meet the timeframe.
Okay, questions from council members regarding the mayor BA items? Okay, do we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, none noted. These shall be added. Okay, Corporation Council.
Thank you, council president. This evening, I have two items for consideration by the council. The first is an additional appropriation for the law firm of Souter Law Group for an additional $15,000. That will bring the total appropriation of the, to the, of, for the year to $40,000. And the other is an additional $5,000 to the law firm of McManaman Scotland and Baumann, which will bring their total appropriation to $60,000 for the year. Both of these firms are working on numerous redevelopment projects. As you'll see, the economic development director has numerous items for consideration this evening. All of these items are reviewed by legal counsel and these are two of the firms that we use to do so.
Okay, questions from council members? Okay, do we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, none noted. These shall be added. Okay, Corporation Council.
Thank you, council president. This evening, I have two items for consideration by the council. The first is an additional appropriation for the law firm of Souter Law Group for an additional $15,000. That will bring the total appropriation of the, to the, of, for the year to $40,000. And the other is an additional $5,000 to the law firm of McManaman Scotland and Baumann, which will bring their total appropriation to $60,000 for the year. Both of these firms are working on numerous redevelopment projects. As you'll see, the economic development director has numerous items for consideration this evening. All of these items are reviewed by legal counsel and these are two of the firms that we use to do so.
Okay, questions from council members? Okay, do we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, they shall be added. All right, next, Department of Finance, please present your items, your handles.
Good evening, all.
Oh, she's on.
She's on, wow.
Good evening, Director. Floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you. I have three resolutions for your approval, resolution 337 dash 25 through 339 dash 25. First one is Chapter 159 Resolution, adding two items to the budget, $500,000 being used for the citywide alarm system and $25,000 being used by the community development department. Second resolution is 338, adopting a corrective action plan in response to two recommendations made on our audit. The first recommendation was that the tax department provide a, prepare a detailed listing of all outstanding redemption of outside liens. A listing was prepared and was in place, but it was not as detailed as they required. The tax department did reach out and provided the additional information that they required and this has already been taken care of, but it was a little bit too late to take it off the audit recommendation list. So it remained, but it's had been taken care of. The second recommendation is that there's sufficient budgetary balances to be available for debt service. And this happened because when the budget, the 2024 budget was done, the debt, the note was not yet issued, the note was issued in August of the next year for the utility. And the interest was not accounted for in the budget. And since the utilities operate on an accrual basis, the interest payment came up as an issue. But that has already been dealt with also and it has been taken care of for the year 2025. The third resolution is, resolution establishing delinquent sewer and solid waste interest rates. A recent statute, state statute stated that the interest rate on delinquent bills should be one and a half percent per month, which equates to 18% per year. So this could, would result in an increase in revenue for the city because we currently charge eight percent on the first $1,500 and then 18% on the, the remaining, if there's a balance over 1,500. But according to this stat, statute, it would be 18% across the board, so it could, would result in additional revenue for the city. And those are my three resolutions for today. Are there any questions?
Questions from council?
Council president.
Go right ahead, Madam VP.
Madam, go ahead. Council vice president.
Madam Director, 337, the $25,000 for the Sears Consumer Protection and Education Fund, can you just educate me on what is that?
Well, I think it is being used for first time, to assist first time home buyers. And Director Brung may be able to elaborate on that a little bit more, but that's primarily what that would be used for, to assist first time home buyers.
Do you want me to? In, in addition to preparing individuals for first time, being able to be first time homeowners, we really are spending that money on financial literacy. And so ultimately, the goal is for individuals and residents to become first time home buyers and to kind of participate in the programs that economic development is doing, but we're working on budgeting, we're working on those kind of things that will solidify their ability to get a mortgage and all those other things. You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Council president, that was the question I was going to ask. Thank you.
Okay, any other question? Go ahead.
Yes, council president, if I may, for resolution 339 dash 25, I do understand creating a penalty, but as we do know, some of our constituents here within our city are hurting with the PSENG, the rates going up. Now, we're going to penalize people for late payments as well. So in the future, will we have something set up where there will be relief for residents who are going through difficult times?
Well, we can look into something in the future, but what we are doing is responding to what the state statute says should be in place. So we're changing what we had in place to match what the state says should be in place and we have to do, and that's something that we're, the city is obligated to do. We, of course, we can look in future to see how we can provide some relief, but we have to go with the 18% as stipulated.
Can we hear from our legal counsel regarding whether we have an obligation to follow the state statute in this instance?
Yes, of course, we'd all like to find, you know, we're all, I'm sure the administration would always like to find the programs to offset those who are unable to make the payments. However, the state statute must dictate and we must follow it.
More questions?
And, and let me be clear, this is only on delinquent bills. So I mean, if you're on time or, you know, it, it only affects delinquent bills.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, do we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those items shall be added. We're now at the police department.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the police have two resolutions on this evening. The first one is an MOU with the law enforcement assisted diversion program. So this is a program that Union County, with their opioid funds, are funding for specific municipalities within the county. Elizabeth is one of them. And Elizabeth already has this in place, they've been doing it for some time and it's been successful there. So Trinitas reached out to us as another potential partner, again, no cost to us because the county is funding it with their opioid funds that they received in the settlement. And this is an opportunity for us to partner with Trinitas and with harm reduction agencies to, at the pre-arrest phase, have a partnership between the police and Trin, and this program by which people will be given counseling and rehab and, you know, whatever is mental health related treatment, whatever is deemed appropriate for that individual, instead of going through the arrest process. And this is only for certain nonviolent, you know, small crimes, like nonviolent general city ordinance violations or theft of $500 or less. And there's, it's clearly outlined what is and isn't eligible for this, but it's a good opportunity for our police department to engage in a holistic way of treating people who have committed a small crime.
Okay.
And the second one, oh, sorry, I forgot, there was another one. The second one is a five-year contract with Axon, that's the current provide, that's the current vendor, and this is looking to extend by five more years for body worn cameras. We're going to save about $415,000 over the five years by committing to a five-year contract. They're a state vendor, so doesn't need to be a bid process.
Okay, questions from council members?
Council president?
Yes.
Madam BA, could you maybe just paint a operational picture on how the partnership with Trinitas and the police department is going to work? At what point is this counseling service called in? Is this when they're in front of the judge? Is this when they're at the police department? Can you just paint a more concrete operational process for me?
Yeah, it's when they're at the police department, it's prior to any adjudication. So let's say someone is brought in for petty theft. At that time, the, there's going to be a staff in the police department who's familiar with this program, who's part of the committee and they're aware, you know, of who qualifies and who doesn't. And at that point, when that person is brought in, somebody will be asked, because the crime will be one of these, you know, is this, does this person qualify? And based on the criteria, if they do, at that point, that person will be connected to the Trinitas program and followed through by the two people from Trinitas who are going to do the case management at that point. So it, it will happen prior to, you know, when they come here, but prior to any kind of legal process.
So they would still go before the judge?
Um, I don't, I don't believe that they're going to go before the judge. I believe that this is, this is, as long as the complainant is willing to decline prosecution, it, it will be diverted to a treatment process.
And they're going to be full-time stationed here in the police department?
Two of them, yeah.
Both of them?
Two, two people from Trinitas who are committed to Plainfield.
Any consideration around language in terms of the hiring? I know they're not city employees.
Yeah, they're not ours.
They're going to be in place of, of Trinitas, but is there any opportunity to give them some feedback about the diverse languages that we have in our city and, and the impact in terms of selecting the, the best person to fit the culture of the city?
Yes, definitely, that's something that we'll discuss with them. And I know in Elizabeth, they had a similar concern.
More questions? Okay, we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, these shall be added. Okay, the Department of Public Works.
Me again. So the Department of Public Works just has one resolution. You may remember that we had a DOT grant for streets, for basically sidewalk repair downtown, East Front Street from Wachung to Roosevelt. So this is the contract for Panoni to create the professional design services for that project.
Okay, questions from council? Okay, do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? None noted, should be added to the consent agenda. Okay, the Department of Economic Development, Director?
Good evening, council. I will be presenting items 343 through 352. The first resolution is related to conduct a area in need study. This would be, of course, if we move from the study to redevelopment, it would also be to commence a redevelopment plan. This is for a property that's owned by the city. It would be to look at this property possible for developing affordable homes for sale. The next resolution is also to cut, conduct a redevelopment study. This is one contiguous property located on Johnson Avenue. This would also look at redevelopment and possible development of a redevelopment plan. The next one is the designation of Block 146, Lot 7. This is permission to develop a redevelopment plan. We are looking to This would also look at redevelopment and possible development of a redevelopment plan. The next one is the designation of Block 146, Lot 7. This is permission to develop a redevelopment plan. We are looking to designate the area in need of redevelopment. And this is to focus on a redevelopment plan for education. The next one is to designate a redeveloper. This is a property located at 300 to 324 Madison Avenue. This was a presentation earlier this year. This was for, it has also already approved cannabis cultivation and manufacturing. This would be to designate the developer as it's required before it can move on to site plan approval for the site. This is about a 40,000 square foot warehouse. It would be 32,000 square feet for cultivation, 8,000 square feet for manufacturing. The next one is a designation for a mixed-use property. This is located at 314 East Fourth Street. This is a return to council in response to the desire to have one-to-one parking. That one-to-one parking is possible now with the allotment and the agreement of spaces in a municipal lot. So this would be 68 units, 68 parking spaces. The next resolution is to designate a property located at 192 to, excuse me, 1092 to 1098 Arlington Avenue. This would be for 24 workforce-affordable units, 24 parking spaces. It also includes that this is a municipally-owned property. So it would be a land disposition agreement. The next resolution is for an amendment to an original redevelopment agreement. This is located at 768 to 900 North Avenue. Originally, this was a mix of warehouse and recreation space, where it would start with occupying the warehouse first and it would be more warehouse than recreation. Now, this is to switch to more recreation, where we would start with 18 pickleball courts, a restaurant reception area, as well as additional parking spaces where they acquired the lot next door to those, 902 North Avenue. The next resolution is to amend the redevelopment plan. This one was located at 1314 to 1320 West Front Street. Originally, this was 18 units and it had less than 1,000 square feet commercial. This would go 99 units, 99 parking spaces. It would also add a restaurant that was just under 4,500 square feet and also include the restaurant rooftop element as well as a lounge and other rooftop amenities. The next resolution is related to SR Redevelopment LLC. This is for the developer to get their mortgage and waive their 30-day notice period just to proceed. This is a part of the City Village Development that's located on East Third Street. And the final resolution, 352, is a resolution authorizing immediate effectiveness for MC 2025-33. This is needed to proceed with using financing that is available for this calendar year. That concludes my presentation.
Questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
R 343-25, the 658 South Second Street. And that particular area, I know they were saying that, that you were mentioning that that was city property. Now, that street is pretty congested already. On South Second Street, there is two auto body shops. And that particular, that particular space, I think it would be a great idea to take that space and maybe offer it to the body shops. Have them to pay to have that space and leave that area alone. And the reason why I'm saying that is because those two body shops, that particular, those residents across the street from there, both sides, I've talked to the ticketing. They've gotten eight tickets for parking over there. And what happens is the auto body shops are taking up all the spaces and they're harassing the residents over there, and that's not right. And so therefore, if you notice, and if you do go back down there, you'll see a sign that says, it says something about the parking is an ordinance there. Right there, there's a sign there that says about parking. Now, that's a problem because this one particular resident, again, just got another ticket. Three day, Friday, got another ticket and went right down to the parking and said, listen, you keep giving us tickets and it's not right. And they have nowhere to park. And also, her father has health issues and he can't walk a long distance. So that's a problem. So she has herself, her husband, her son, and her father living in the house also as well. So I think we need to reconsider putting some apartments right there. We need to talk to those people over there with those auto body shops and maybe consider, they'll pave that area, park their cars over there so that the residents have somewhere to park. Because you need to go there and check it out. I'm telling you, it's a problem, it's a major problem. And I checked it out for myself. So that's, that's an issue.
It's not being considered for apartments at all. It's being considered for single-family homes or two-family homes for sale. That property was offered to the neighboring auto body shop several times and he refused.
And they refused. Well, that's, I'm telling you, it's a problem over there. And the resident should be, she might be on the call right now. But it's, I'm telling you, it's definitely a problem. And I talked, I specifically spoke to two residents over there. And one, her son has gotten four tickets and she has gotten three. That parking is a problem over there on Second Street. And they have, her son, when he comes in late at night, he has to park up by the church. And when he parks by the church, what happens is he still gets a ticket because he has nowhere to park.
Other questions?
Council President, I have a question. For Resolution 346-25, what is the community benefit? How much is the community benefit for that?
$100,000, $100,000.
Thank you. And for Resolution 347-25, the one-to-one parking, how long is that? Is that for the duration of the pilot?
Yes, it is. All one-to-one parking is duration of the pilot.
Okay, in the municipal lot?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding 344-25 on Johnson Avenue. With this area redevelopment investigation, is there any direction that the zoning board is? We don't know which direction the zoning board is going to go as far as making recommendations for this parcel of property?
Redevelopment agreements and redevelopment areas only go to the planning board. So right now, we're just looking to study the area. It's not proposing uses yet.
Okay. I'm hoping that they create subdivisions where we can add single, two-family homes as opposed to apartments. So I'll await their findings. Thank you.
R 350-25, 1314 West Front Street. I know you said there's 99 units, right? 99 units and 30 is going to go to the restaurant? So that makes it what, 69?
No, it's going to be at this 129 total.
It's going to be 129 total? So is, okay, okay.
Questions? Madam VP, Vice President?
350, is there a community benefit for R 350-25?
Yes, $100,000.
And is there a community benefit for 348?
Yes, that one is $25,000.
Council President, I have one more. The workforce, workforce ready, what is the income?
So the income level right now for that one, it was presented when, at 24, 2024. So the income level is $73,000 annually. It has recently increased, but we don't, we haven't presented to you any of those amounts yet. In June and July, we switch over our annual assessment of that amount and our income increased from $73,000 to $82,000.
It's going to increase? Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, are there any items that members would like to vote on separately?
Let's say no to R 343-25.
Which, what's the number 34?
343-25. Also, R 348-25, the Arlington Avenue project. Just a question. That building, I know you was, I read, three-story residential building. Isn't it kind of close to the street? They're kind of congested over there, too.
No, this is a vacant lot. It's at the corner of Arlington Avenue.
Right, mhm.
So it's one-to-one parking, all the parking would be under the building?
Under the roof?
Under the building, yes.
I know Rose Street is pretty crowded. And when I ride past there, they're almost to the corner. And then over there is a flood area, too, as well.
Are you requesting that item be removed, 348? Or was, you just had questions?
Madam? Oh, 348, I'm going to say no.
Councilwoman.
343 also.
Okay, so 343. You don't have to indicate your voting preference, but just whether or not we have consensus for it. So if we don't have consensus for 343 and 348, also for 345, I'm going to abstain. So could you please remove that as well so we can vote on separately?
Council President?
Yes.
Can we add 346 as well?
From the, to poll?
Yes.
Okay, so 346 also will be voted on separately. Okay, so the remaining items besides 343, 345, 346, and 348, do we have consensus to add those to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Hearing none, those items, save for those four, shall be removed. Shall be on the voting meeting. Okay, Department of Health and Social Services, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Council President and Council. I have four resolutions for tonight. I'll start with the first one, 353-25, which is a resolution denouncing health misinformation and racial bias in federal public health leadership. My department is facing some severe challenges, which I have brought before the council over the last couple of months and certainly you could see it in the news. But my directors wanted me to emphasize that this is crossing the line where you use racial bias as a form of determining who gets vaccinations, particularly if you are black. And so my directors wanted me to emphasize that this is unacceptable when we are working diligently around health equity and providing services for all. However, this harks back to times of hemiata lax. It harks back to Tuskegee. And in 2025, this is certainly unacceptable when we talk about public health. Public health is many things. We're starting to see challenges to vaccinations and we will certainly see, hopefully not too damaging, but some very challenging things in Florida as they've removed certain vaccination requirements. And these are the things that here in Plainfield, we're continually trying to make sure that our residents and our students, as they prepare for school, had those vaccinations. And so what I'm concerned about and what we, as a department, are concerned about is that we are going back to times when waste was used as a form of medicalization. And we just cannot accept that. And it crosses the line for all people. It's not just for black and brown communities. But when you begin to use health and vaccinations, when you stop funding vaccinations that can cure, we are going to see a health crisis as a nation that we work to eradicate. We are afraid of seeing polio. We are afraid of seeing tuberculosis. We are afraid of seeing measles. We are afraid of seeing all those things that could possibly come back and reach pandemic form. So we are asking, my department or all my division heads are asking for the support of the council as we denounce this terrible racial bias in federal public health leadership. We recognize that there is no law behind it, but we also recognize that there is a moral responsibility of municipalities to stand up and to be heard when things are wrong for its residents. And so we ask for support on that resolution. Resolution 354-25 is a resolution for a grant that provides housing assistance, food support, electricity, utility assistance, and supportive programs for those 125% of the federal poverty line. Resolution 355-25 is a resolution, it's an art grant from the county that we are applying for. It's upwards of $6,000 and that is used in our senior center for various arts programs. And many of you have been to the senior center to see those art shows and art programs. Resolution 356-25 is also a grant, an amount of 220,000. This is a CSBG grant, no, Department of Community Affairs grant, apologies, CSBG grant. This is, this provides rental assistance and security deposit assistance for those eligible 250% above the federal poverty line. Those are my resolutions and I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Questions from council members?
I have a question. Council President, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
For the resolution R 354-25, could you talk a little bit more about that? Is that to prevent? Is that more of rental assistance? Talk more about that.
So both of these grants, I'm comfortable to say, are preventive. They are grants that we use to prevent homelessness, to prevent people becoming unhoused. And so when you come to us seeking assistance, this is what we do. We give you housing assistance, we will give you food support, which means that we will connect you with a pantry or provide food for you to get food. Also, we may even give you a, I don't want to call it a credit card, what is that thing called?
Voucher?
A voucher to get food. And we will help with electricity and utility assistance. Often, if you are needing housing assistance, you also may need utility assistance. Or utility assistance bill is so high that it's causing you not to pay your rent. So those are interconnected. And so we really do try to work on both of those. It has been, there have been situations where we have provided housing assistance and utility assistance. And the supportive programs, it really is about case management. How do we keep you from getting back to where you are? And sometimes it's about employment or underemployment or unemployment. Sometimes it's retooling your skills. So we do all that with the monies from this grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, thank you for presenting these resolutions regarding health issues in our state. I really appreciate you bringing these issues forward.
Thank you.
Question, with regard to security deposits. The department would pay the whole month and a half security. If that's the case, and would that be a hardship if they're trying to move into a place and they just don't have their security? Or how does that actually work? Or how is that triggered when a security deposit is requested?
So it could happen a couple of ways. One, we could have helped you get an apartment, right? So you may have one month's rent, but the landlord may be asking for two months' rent and a security deposit. And so that's preventative from you becoming into an apartment. So what we would do is we look at your situation. We may help you with the preview, or the month, like if you need two months, we may give you a month of rent to keep you on your feet and rental assistance, down payment assistance. So in some cases, it's a month and a half, in some it's two months. It depends on what the landlord is requesting. We do negotiate sometimes to say, we can give you a month if you allow us to waive the half a month, and some landlords do do that.
One program that the housing, Plainfield Housing uses a landlord incentive and that would typically be used
that would typically be used if and when there is a broker fee involved, because sometimes apartments have realtors attached, and you have to pay a broker fee. Is that something that your department gets involved in?
No, we can't do that.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Any others?
Yeah, Council President. First, I want to echo the same sentiments as Councilwoman Cherry to you, Director, as well as your entire staff with regards to the resolutions about racial bias in public health. I thank you for your courage to speak up about that. You know, comments such as blacks needing fewer antigens than whites and should not receive the same vaccines is not only ignorant, but should be considered a form of domestic terrorism, in my point of view. So, I appreciate you taking a stance on that this evening, and I support you one thousand percent on that. With regards to the, when we provide, and this is just education for me, so when the city provides support for security deposit, is that security deposit made out directly to the landlord from the city, or is that money transferred to the tenant, and then the tenant pays it to the landlord?
So, all dollars go directly to the landlord.
Okay. So, in the event that the person moves out, does that money come back to the city?
It depends on when they move out, so.
Well, it's a security deposit, right? To make sure that they don't mess up the apartment or whatever.
Right, I mean, we, we have multiple situations, I'll be very clear with that. Generally, it will come back to us, but sometimes unbeknownst to us, the tenant may get back into problems, for whatever reasons, and, and there are many. They will live out that, that money. So, we, we can't control that.
Got you. And then, with regards to both of the grants, just clarification for me, because sometimes I get confused, these two particular grants state that they are only good to the end of the fiscal year, which I'm assuming we're referring to the state fiscal year. So, this money would go from January one, twenty twenty-six, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, or is it for the entire calendar year?
This is the calendar year.
So, it would go for the entire, all of twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, these shall be added. The Department of Communications and Technology, Director, floor is yours.
Good evening, Council President, thank you. Tonight, I have one resolution, asking the city of, authorizing the city of Plainfield to enter into a service agreement with JCT Solutions to implement a citywide emergency warning notification system in the amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Now, what this is, is after the storms that we had in July, we identified the need for a early warning system. And as a result of that, we went out to look at what was available. We were able to, through JCT Solutions, identify a solution that would work for the city of Plainfield. It's going to be a citywide network of sirens that will, each, it will be a total of seven sirens that will be deployed. Each one will cover about a one-mile radius. They can put out different types of sounds, as well as we'll have the opportunity to record a message that can be heard by all the residents. The sound levels are adjustable, and most of the city will hear the sirens at about eighty decibels, which is similar to standing next to a large leaf blower. As you get closer to this, to the device, it will get louder, but the majority of the city would hear it at at least that level, which ensures that even if you're in your home, you'll be able to hear the warning. The system will connect to our city's emergency communications infrastructure and include remote activation, monitoring, and diagnostics. Our partner, JCT Solutions, is also going to provide a detailed coverage map to guide the placement. Right now, we're still selecting the best locations for these sirens, and we're working out the logistics for deployment. And we believe this is going to be a strong investment in place, in Plainfield's overall plan for safety and preparedness and response when it comes to emergencies.
Okay. Talk about how we pay for it, I think it was alluded to in the beginning of the meeting, but talk about its impact to taxpayers, if any.
Sure. So, as the BA mentioned at the top of the meeting, the funds, there were funds that allocated, that were allocated for something else, that we were not able to meet the timeline. So, this is going to be fully paid for by a grant from the Union County Office. So, no impact to Plainfield taxpayers.
And I, I understand that even if the county didn't pay for it, we were, we were looking for this type of solution?
Absolutely. So, we had previously, we were previously working to find out if there were FEMA funds available for this. We, there was a town in Texas, I believe it was, that was able to tap into FEMA funds to do something similar. So, we were pursuing that angle before these funds were identified as a possible source of funding.
I know Texas had another, another city that had some deadly floods as well. Do we know any other places where this type of technology has been actually implemented or deployed?
In New Jersey?
In New Jersey or elsewhere?
I would, I'm sure JCT Solutions is able to help us with that. They have worked with other municipalities on something similar, so if you want to allow them to take the mic, they can speak to that.
Okay. Sure, just, just a brief question. Floor is yours.
Steve Mullen from JCT Solutions. Good afternoon, I mean, good evening.
Fett Siddiqui from JCT Solutions, good evening.
Yeah, so the question was just, can you tell us a little bit about the technology, where it's been tested or deployed anywhere else?
We have this installed in the Port of Elizabeth.
Okay.
It's also been installed with success in Lumberton, New Jersey.
Okay. And what is the square mileage of coverage in those two areas?
In Elizabeth, I believe it's three to four square miles that we have coverage. Lumberton, I can't speak to.
Okay. Anybody else have questions for them?
I have questions.
Where they sit down?
Where are they placed within Elizabeth? Are they on the streets? Are they located in a park? Are they in, like, the local, like, next to someone's home?
We have not finalized the locations, but we plan on putting them in the streets.
In Elizabeth? Where are they located in Elizabeth?
By the port, on the Riverwalk.
Okay.
Are they up high, or are they low?
There, we typically place them on large poles. They're up very high.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Yes, with regard to when the alarm needs to go off, and I'm, I'm sure that's handled by a human, but is that like a designated person? Or are there a few people who have some sort of code or a button to make that alarm goes off when it needs to go off?
So, we can provide as many or as few buttons to trigger the alarm. That would be up to your Department of Emergency Management.
So, it's the sound, plus, I guess, some sort of wording, letting the people know that it's a real emergency?
Correct. It can be a mixture of the two.
And in the event of a false alarm, I guess, that can be? We can have a false alarm message. Right, okay. That can be activated, just as easy as an, an emergency message. Sure, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, those are all my questions.
Council President.
The proposal includes five people that can do it. And these, these terminals can be accessed remotely.
Thank you.
Council President, are you the third-party operator, or is the city operating this?
We are going to train the city, but yes, you can always call us. We support your nine-one-one system, but we're always on call.
So, if, in the event tomorrow we have a situation at five P.M., is Director Clayton Hunt, is she the person that's going to execute, or is she reaching out to your company to execute the call and then the blast?
It will be executed by city personnel.
City personnel?
Yes. JCT would be there as our, if, if there are any troubleshooting issues that need to be addressed, then we will reach out to them.
Okay.
And Keisha, your OEM person, was also in the meeting today.
Council, Councilman?
Yes, just one question, I don't know, this may be for you, Mrs. Clayton Hunt. The education, so how do we educate our residents on, you said it's five different sounds, what they actually mean, what happens once they're, the sound is deployed? So, how do we go about educating the residents, and what department would do that?
Definitely, the IT and the Communications Department will work together closely to ensure that there is adequate notice that's sent out to our residents about how the system works, how it will be deployed, and what to be, you know, on the lookout for. We actually will probably have to perform a few tests before, just to make sure it actually works during an emergency. So, at that time, you know, we'll notify the public to be alert for the fact that we'll be performing tests and what to expect. So, there will be a, an education campaign around deploying before we actually deploy them.
And does this tie into, like, the reverse nine-one-one, where we receive text messages, phone calls? Is that tied into that software as well?
No, that, those are two different systems. The NICSIL system operates independently of this, but, you know, whereas if you're in your car and you get a text, you may not be able to immediately look at your, at your phone. If you're in your car, within the environs of Plainfield, you're going to hear the siren going off, and whether you can actually hear what the recorded message is, it's a warning to you that something is happening, and you probably should get to somewhere safe.
Okay, just one more thing, I'm just thinking about this. For the residents who may be hard of hearing or deaf, what's in place for them?
That's a good question. I'm not sure that we thought that part of it through, but it's something to look at and come back on. I mean, I imagine those who are hearing impaired, that if they actually have phones, they may have tactile phones, that, where they get those messages through that, but this system wouldn't obviously probably be for someone who's hearing impaired.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, do we?
My last question.
Oh, do you have one?
So, if there's an area in the city that's not affected, will they not get the alert? Is it only in the affected area? Or is this a city-wide?
Yeah, this would be a city-wide alert throughout the entire city.
Thank you.
So, just a follow-up question, with regard to our hearing impaired residents, I guess there'll be other layers of communication that would not work in conjunction with this system. But what else do we have for our hearing impaired residents in the event there needs to be an evacuation?
Well, you know, like I said, I'm pretty sure that for the hearing impaired, they have those tactile phones. And they would get the alert from NICSIL, and, and, you know, the other SMS alerts that we send out surrounding that.
And last question, with regard to when the alarms are triggered, I guess, will it let our residents know whether or not they need to evacuate, or just be aware, or?
We have the opportunity to have a recorded message on the system, so we would provide details in that message as to what the action is that we want them to take.
Yeah, that's it for me, yeah.
Question, since they're going to be supporting you, is there a service or maintenance fee on top of the installation?
No, there is not. No, there is no year-two cost to the system.
So, lifetime warranty?
So, if it's upgraded in future, you do that automatically?
Are you upgrading, talking about the software or the hardware?
The system, if the system is upgraded, do you provide the upgrade fee, or do we have to?
An upgrade would have to be paid for.
So, therefore, there's a maintenance fee?
We don't foresee any upgrades throughout the life of the system.
If there's an hardware, if there's a hardware upgrade, and the city decides that they want to upgrade the hardware, then we would have to pay for it. If there's a software upgrade in terms of supporting the system, then we would automatically get that software upgrade. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just a quick question, what's the, the system that's in place now? How effective is, do we have something in place right now?
Our early warning system, right, our emergency warning system right now is the NICSIL, which is the text that you get on your phone saying, beware, you know, that, that's the most effective system that we have in place right now. This will be an added layer, and it will actually be an early, even earlier warning system than that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Okay, do we have consensus to add this item to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Hearing none, that shall be added. Okay, the Department of Sewer and Solid Waste.
Good evening, Council President and Council. I have one resolution for your consideration tonight, the purchase of three new Chevy Colorados and one new Chevy Tahoe from Pellegrino Chevrolet in the amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-one thousand, fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. And these vehicles will be used for the admin and inspections divisions.
Okay, questions? Do we have consensus?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, let's move on to ordinances on first reading. The BA, present your ordinances.
Okay, we have eight ordinances for first reading this evening, and the first four are all bond ordinances for capital, capital improvements. So, the first two are the sewer and solid waste utility, since they're separated out in our budget. First one is for sewer, for equipment, second one is solid waste, for equipment and transfer station upgrades. Third one is for the parking utility, because that's also separate from our budget, and that's to pave lots and license plate readers. And then, the fourth one is for the general budget, and a large chunk of that is road improvements, IT upgrades, especially for the police department, for their server, and then the matches for the grants, sorry, the matches for the grants that we have to provide. We also have a million dollars for DPW equipment in there. So, those are the four that are our capital ordinances, and will allow us to move forward with a lot of our capital projects. The next four, the, the next one is an amendment to the vehicle and traffic ordinance, and this is related to two-hour parking signs over near Muhlenberg that are outdated and no longer enforced, and so we just need to take the signs down, but we can't do that without changing the ordinance. The next one is related to a twenty-four unit building, and this is seeking a tax exemption for this. Right now, we get about four thousand dollars a year in revenue from that property, that would immediately go to fifty-three thousand dollars, and then over the course of the thirty years, we'll see about three and a half million dollars additional into the city budget than we would have seen had we not done this. The second one is an execution for a financial agreement with three O.C. Watchung, that's related to a fifty-five unit building, has escalators in the agreement for every ten years, it's a twenty percent affordable building, and the community benefit for that was the, the mural that we unveiled earlier in the summer. And then, the third one is a first amendment to a financial agreement for twenty-five Clinton Ave and twenty-one Clinton Ave and thirteen fourteen dash twenty West Front. This is a ninety-nine unit building, it's coming back with ninety, with one-to-one parking. It's also been amended to go from ten to fifteen workforce affordable housing units.
Okay. Ask any questions that you'd like, council colleagues. Okay, seeing none, do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those shall be added. All right, we've completed that part of the meeting, we will, I'll have a motion for a five-minute recess.
Second.
All right, all in favor for a five-minute recess? Let's go.
Recording stopped.
The parents just took all of us and it's a vivid memory in my mind that we were there. I also know that Mullenberg used to have an iron lung and a separate ward for polio victims. We even had a president who was a victim of polio. The closure of Mullenberg had elements of racial bias, so this is important to our community, and I thank you Director Brown for putting forth this resolution, and the city council hopefully will approve it. I hope that this resolution gets sent to state and federal officials so that they know how our community feels about this. Also, on R 357-25 about the sirens, I lived here, you know, all my life, and I do remember sirens at North Plainfield East and Green Brook, we used to hear them where I lived in the West End. They were, I don't know whatever happened to them, I know North Plainfield had at least three, and I hope that if this gets put in, that there's also some instructions of where people should go for higher ground in case a flood does come again, and I thank you for putting forth this resolution.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak regarding motions, resolutions being considered this evening? Okay, just state the resolution you're speaking regarding and give your name and city.
Okay.
How are you?
R 34325. My name is Lorenzo Bennett, and I'm in Plainfield, New Jersey. So, my issue or my concern is I've been in my home for 24 years, and I have never had an issue like I have currently with the parking. I'm actually the one that my councilperson, Mrs. Briggs Jones, was referring to. We have two auto body shops, and they kind of tag team. They move their cars, so there's no parking. They work on multiple cars, they have employees there, they block my driveway. My son, this month alone, has gotten three tickets. Prior to that, it's been another ticket, I've gotten tickets. It's a church that has a yellow line, I don't know if the city is aware of it or not, but when my son comes in, or my father, which is 80 years old, has to park down the street, and we have to get tickets, it's unfair to the residents that live there. They rent, I own, I've been a homeowner there for years. We do have residential signs up, however, we don't have any type of, I guess, parking permits, so the lot that's in between Junior's car body shop and the other shop, which was previously, I think, a landscaper type of business, landscaping business, you know, I just feel when I come home from work, I work two jobs, Port Authority in New York, Housing Authority in Plainfield. When I come home, I should not have to ride around a block, block my driveway, get a ticket for blocking my driveway, got a ticket for having my car in my yard, where I pay taxes for. So, I agree with anyone trying to make money and having a business, however, being a residential tax-paying Plainfielder all my life is unfair. So, their shop have their cars for their customers on their premises, on their property. Don't take every parking spot up. So, you're selling a lot, I'm interested in buying it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the auto body getting tickets as well? There, there?
No, I know my time is up, but, no. So, they'll have cars parked on the sidewalk. Mr. Sistronk, my councilperson, Plainfield police, they're very familiar with me, because I'm directly across the street. So, you said you offered, or the city offered, the auto shop, that lot, I'm interested in buying it, if it's still for sale. So, no, they don't get tickets.
Okay.
So, I don't know what it is when we park, I don't even know if the church is supposed to have the yellow line here.
Okay.
But it's been a problem, and you can check directly.
Thank you, we'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak regarding resolutions or motions being considered this evening? In case, anyone online?
Not with their hand raised.
Okay. All right, then we'll close public comment for motions and resolutions being considered this evening.
Council President?
Yes.
Can Director Fields respond to that?
If, yeah, if she has a response.
Sure.
Yes.
Regarding the parking in that area in the end. Yeah, yes.
So, first, looking at the signs that are up, those are old residential permit signs, but we are looking for resident permits. We, I'm aware of your concern over there and several times going out to the shop. I would say that the auto body, they actually get tickets, they got warning they're illegally parking on our property as well. We agree with you that it's a situation that we have to look for. In terms of being able to purchase the property, we have to offer it to the adjacent property, so in that case, it would be the auto body shop, or it would be the ABC Supply store first, or it is available for redevelopment options.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we'll now move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are identified as resolutions 324 through 342, 344 through 347, and 349 through 35825, removed from the consent agenda and non-consent. It's resolution 343, 345, 346, and 348. Need a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion and second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
It's unanimous the consent agenda items have been approved. Now move to resolution 34325.
Okay, a motion and a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
No.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
It's five in favor to oppose, 343 has been adopted. Now move to resolution 34525.
Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call, resolution 34525. Council members, Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Abstain.
Five in favor, one opposed, one abstention, 34525 has been adopted, we move to 34625.
Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call, resolution 34625. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, 34625 has been adopted, and finally, we move to resolution 34825.
Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, resolution 34825. Council members, Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose, 34825 has been adopted, those, that concludes resolutions for this evening.
Okay. We now come to ordinances on first reading. Madam Deputy, please read bond 1285 by title.
Bond 1285, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements for the sewer utility of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, state of New Jersey, appropriating $615,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $585,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof.
I entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, bond ordinance 1285. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Bond 1285 has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, move to bond 1286.
Bond 1286, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements for the solid waste utility of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, state of New Jersey, appropriating $1,035,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $985,500 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof.
Intertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, bond ordinance 1286. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Bond 1286 has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read bond 1287.
Bond 1287, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements by and for the parking utility of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, state of New Jersey, appropriating $325,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $325,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call, bond ordinance 1287. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Bond 1287 has been adopted on first reading.
Thank you. Madam Deputy, please read bond 1288.
Bond 1288, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements by and in the city of Plainfield in the county of Union, state of New Jersey, appropriating $6,760,200 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $6,24,177 in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof.
I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, bond ordinance 1288. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Bond 1288 has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, let's move to...
Council President?
Yes.
Do you mind if I interrupt for a sec? There's a car that's blocking the, everyone from getting out. If your license plate is CJ633C, can you move your car, please?
They give a make and model for that?
It's a great SUV, it's parked on the police line. You realize?
Okay. No problem. All right, Madam Deputy, please read the MC 2025-34.
MC 2025-34 is an amendment to ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, amending Chapter 16, the Vehicles and Traffic Ordinance, Article 4, Section 16, colon, 4 dash 5, Schedule 4, Parking Time Limits on Certain Streets and Areas.
I entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-34. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
MC 2025-34 has been adopted on first reading.
Thank you. Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-35.
MC 2025-35 is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, granting a tax exemption with respect to certain property identified as Block 723, Lot 13.01, 1092-1098 Arlington Avenue, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 1092-1098 Arlington Urban Renewal LLC in connection therewith.
I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call on MC 2025-35. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, already adopted on first reading.
Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-36.
MC 2025-36 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 306 Wachong Urban Renewal LLC for certain improvements in the TODD South redevelopment area.
I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-36. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, MC 2025-36 has been adopted on first reading.
Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-37.
MC 2025-37 is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, authorizing a First Amendment to Financial Agreement in connection with property identified as Block 218, Lots 23, 25 Clinton Avenue, 24, 21 Clinton Avenue, and 27, 1314-20 West Front Street.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-37. Council members, Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, MC 2025-37 has been adopted on first reading. That concludes ordinances on first reading.
Okay, thank you. We now move to general comments. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for all public comments. Each speaker will give him, be given three minutes. Reminder that your address is no longer requested, just name and city that you're, that you live in, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Council President. Good evening. Council Vice President, members of the administration. It is really, really good to see you all that's here this evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you tonight. My name is Lamar Maxson. I'm the Executive Director of the Queen City Film Festival, now in its eighth season. So I'm here tonight to tell you about the exciting news of the event that's taking place October 16th through the 19th throughout the city of Plainfield, and I've brought some invitations for you here that will take you directly to the website. But just a quick overview, we have four days of film, fun, friends, and family, located in different venues throughout the city of Plainfield. We're doing exciting things this year, we're working with the new bookstore right next door to create opportunity and venue in downtown. We're also creating an opportunity at the new plant-based dispensary, a live production of an actual show for, open to the public, and that's really on day one. So, throughout the four-day event, we will have a number of events going on throughout the city that will invite filmmakers from all over the world. And if you don't know about the Queen City Film Festival, and I tell you that we have filmmakers coming from all over the world, please believe me, and not just any filmmakers, Academy Award-level filmmakers, Emmy Award-winning filmmakers, filmmakers who have just started their careers, but one thing is for sure, they all know about Plainfield, New Jersey, and over the last eight years, we've attracted hundreds, if not thousands, of filmmakers, but also film lovers to the city of Plainfield. So I want to invite each and every one of you to not only be at our opening night gala on Friday, October 17th, at the Ducrey School of Art, but we are also going to be doing an all-day screening at Cinemark on Wachong on Route 22, as well as a full day of panels, professional development. Come see some of your favorite television celebrities and stars at Plainfield High School, and all of this information is on the website. I don't want to take up a lot of your time tonight, because it's been a long meeting, but I also just wanted to be present, stand here before you, thank you for your continued support over the last eight years, because without the support of the city and the support of each one of the members of the administration, because I've worked with all of you in some capacity, shape, or form, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. We would not be able to attract people to this city to see the value that not only artistic community has, but what the city has to offer in general. So I thank you, my time is up, I'm going to leave these invitations with Ms. Jones if you agree.
Yep.
And thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, have a good night. Name and city, the floor is yours.
Good evening, distinguished council members.
Thank you.
And my fellow Plainfield residents. My name is Angela King, and I have been a resident of Plainfield for 37 years. In my pre-retirement days, I've decided to become active in my community. This is my second experience. The first one, I logged in and had a very bad experience, there's no visual of this room, I couldn't hear what was going on, folks spoke low and fast, and, and so I decided, okay, I got to come down this evening. But one thing, if I can make a suggestion, is that folks announce their names, because you're not close enough to see what's going on, so, you know, before we start speaking, if folks can announce their names, that would be greatly appreciated. Also, is there, like I said, it's my second experience, is there any training for the layperson to understand the language that is in these documents, so when we're sitting here, we understand what's going on, because I'm like, hmm hmm, what, who, what? And, and, you know, it takes kind of a legal mind to understand what's going on. I don't know if there's a training in the city of Plainfield, separate and apart from, you know, what goes on here, for a layperson to take advantage of. And also, I have, one of the reasons I decided to get involved is because of the parade of garbage cans in the fourth ward. I know many, many years ago, when on non-service days, you would have to take your garbage can in, and so now, folks just have their garbage cans lined out. I go to different towns, Westfield, Cochran, Somerset, wherever, Plainfield is the only place I see where the garbage cans just lie in the streets, you know, on non-service days, and it's, it's not a pretty sight. So, if, I know there was an ordinance in place, I don't know what's happening now, or if you can point me to who I can speak to, or, you know, whatever we need to do to get the issue resolved, especially in my, like I say, I'm in the fourth ward. I've seen you, Mr. Hockaday, come around, sometimes Ms. Briggs comes around, but I'm, I'm not really sure where I can go for some help on that matter. And if I'm going to come in to the meetings, can we have some refreshments? Thank you.
It never hurts to ask, right? All right, there's some good points that you brought up, and it's, it's something that we should definitely take into consideration regarding the, and you can come up, sir, you can come up, I know you, you've been waiting patiently. I know Councilwoman Cherry has recruited a few folks for a seminar, you want to speak about that briefly, because it touches on civic engagement.
Sure. Yep, on Saturday, yep, on Saturday, September 13th at 1:00 p.m. at Shiloh Baptist Church, it is called Understanding Government. So, one of the things that we don't understand is that each ward, we have three councilpersons, and in your fourth ward, you actually have three. So, it's easier for you to reach out to Steve Hockaday, your council president, myself, and also Councilwoman Terry Briggs. But at that seminar, it's going to start at 1:00, and you're going to understand the different levels of government, what department to reach out to, what the mayor department, what the mayor does, with the council, with the commissioners, with the assembly, with the Congress, and also with Senate. So, when you have an issue, where you should go. So at that seminar, you will clearly understand what steps and who you should reach out to. So on Saturday, this Saturday, at Shiloh Baptist, at 1:00 p.m., come on out, and you will understand the levels of government. You're welcome.
Ali, was there anyone online?
Not with their hand raised.
Okay. We're about to close public hearing, soon as you speak.
Hi, Larry Cohen, Fanwood, New Jersey. In February of this year, you passed a resolution in support of a state bill that aims to end the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in pet stores throughout the state, and I think you remember, the issue there was an effort by New Jersey to divorce itself from this cruel puppy mill industry whereby these pets are raised in these Midwest, Midwest states, and then imported in to unsuspecting consumers. And this is something that's a nationwide effort, eight states have passed this statewide, New Jersey leads the nation in local ordinances with 149, and while this effort continues in New Jersey, I am back here tonight to ask you to take the next logical step, which is to pass your own ordinance saying, we've already said we don't support this on a state level, we'd like to formalize it and say that we don't want this in the city of Plainfield. The ordinance language, which I've sent to you a couple of times over the last couple of weeks, I have hard copies here if you want, it's very similar to the resolution, it affects no stores in town, it doesn't ban any stores, it's not even really a business issue, it's an animal welfare issue, it just says businesses are welcome in town, but we don't want them selling dogs and cats, because we know where these, these animals come from, and we don't approve of that. So I'm asking, I know when the resolution came up, Vice President Sessoms and Councilman Wyatt kind of championed it, and I appreciate that so much, I'm looking for one or two of you to champion this on an ordinance level, and hopefully take it up and pass it within the next month or so. Would anybody like a hard copy?
Yes, you can, you can hand them.
Okay. Yeah, I've got copies. Right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
All right, that shall be closed. Are there any outstanding? I think we took some time.
No, Council President, I would just like to make a motion to reconsider my vote on MC. When can I do that?
Would you like to change your vote?
Yes.
You can do that.
Okay. MC 2025-35?
Yes.
No.
Clerk, you can note that for the record.
Motion to reconsider.
Uh, Council Vice President, I, to respond to your question, if it doesn't change the ultimate outcome of the vote, which I don't believe it does, it's certainly before the end of the meeting, any council member can change their vote.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.